Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, unusual at these meetings sometimes. Good morning, my name is Michael Saint. And I basically am the treasurer of Campaign for Sustainable Transportation, as well I've been responsible for going through RTC meetings, which Kristin knows, and listening to them and then reporting back to our group primarily. A little change in the program, Kimberly Distert recently canceled. She gives her regrets for canceling, but we had been asking her for the last couple of months with not much response, but she just a couple of days ago said she couldn't make it. So it'll be Kristin only, so she's the focal group today. I wanted to thank quickly some of the people that got this program together. Alyssa Wagner, Christina Grant, Pauline Seals, Bruce Van Allen, our chair, Rick Longenati for Campaign for Sustainable Transportation in Pan North. They did a lot of going to houses, coffee shops, placing flyers, just like we normally do in campaigns. So just wanted to mention them. And a few ground rules, as I remember, or presently happening, we still are a democracy, at least for another couple of months, depending on who wins the election. So we are a democracy, so let's respect everybody's opinions here. We're going to have changes of opinions and try to be very respectful to other people that are talking. The general plan today is after my welcome, Rick Longenati will make a presentation for about 10 minutes. Then we'll go to Ford, Friends of Rail and Trail, five minutes. And then we'll go to Sierra Club for five minutes. And then between those presentations, we'll ask Kristin to make some comments about what they presented. Then after that, we're going to open it up for questions and answers. Everybody that wants to ask questions, make comments, suggestions. And it's all dealing mainly with transportation today in the Santa Cruz area. You can do Rail and Trail, you can do Oxlanes, Soquel Avenue, Bikes, Safe Streets, just numerous things if you have questions. And then Kristin will have, you'll have two minutes, and then Kristin will have three minutes to respond. We're going to try to group three people together for questions, so there's enough material that she can respond to in three minutes. So I'll be going around trying to organize that issue of it during the question and answer period. So without any further delay, we have Rick Longenati.
Hi, everybody.
Good morning.
So I want to give you the background for a big project that's happening in Aptos. And how many people here are living in Aptos? Oh, no, the vast majority. So let's get started. So something that everybody in the room can agree with is that we don't like traffic congestion. It gives less time for you and your loved ones. And not only that, they've actually measured that. It harms community relationships. People do not have as much time to spend, you know, in civic connectedness with each other. This guy, Robert Putnam, wrote a book called Bowling Alone, and he's measured this kind of stuff, you know, less time for church groups or PTAs or just connecting with friends. So the idea to reduce congestion is a natural idea, right? And the Regional Transportation Commission, which is composed of representatives from all the cities and the counties, plus the board supervisors, plus metro, they've had this plan to build auxiliary lanes. And it's been motivated by the desire to reduce congestion. So we see right now construction on this segment right here. It's almost finished. Next, they'll be going from Bay Porter to State Park Drive. And the one we're talking about today is not funded. These are all funded. The one we're talking about today from State Park, the Freedom Boulevard, is not funded, okay? So auxiliary lanes, what's an auxiliary lane? It's an exit-only lane. You get on and you gotta merge, otherwise you have to get off, right? Everybody knows what that is. The word bus-on-shoulder is often applied to this project. It's called the auxiliary lanes and bus-on-shoulder. How many people have heard that name? It's a misnomer, I'm going to explain why in a minute. So everybody wants congestion relief, but we don't want illusory solutions, right? Everybody's on board with that idea. So I want to make the argument that this auxiliary lane project is an illusory solution. And the way you can conceive of it is bottlenecks. You got two lanes down the highway. You add an auxiliary lane, an exit-only lane, but it has the same width at the inter, these are the interchange changes. It's the same width. In fact, Caltrans EIR studying this very project said the mainline capacity at the interchanges is unchanged by the project, good? Cars aren't going to get through at any greater rate through those interchanges. So there was this EIR on the project. Linda Wilsherson, she read the EIR and she made comments on it. This is what she said. "The data in the draft EIR itself demonstrate no sustained traffic relief benefit from this project. The project does not accomplish the stated purpose and need." Now Linda was the executive director of the Regional Transportation from its founding in 1985 for the next 20 years. So let's talk about the cost of this project. So this photo was taken, I took this photo on Moosehead Drive. Anybody been on Moosehead Drive? Okay, so it's a nice walk, even though it's right next to the freeway, quite noisy. But, you know, they have these, yeah, these beautiful trees there. So over 1,100 trees would be eliminated. There's a monetary cost. This project used to be listed as 180 million. Now they don't list that anymore because they realize it's going to be more. Why is it going to be more? This photo tells a big part of the story. This is one of the two railroad crossings, and you see how narrow the highway is in between. So you have to demolish the railroad bridges and rebuild them. And not only that, you have to cross Aptos Creek and Valencia Creek and do an extensive amount of work on the bridges to widen the highway over there. So this particular segment of the project, just over two miles, is more expensive than the rest of these auxiliary lanes that they're planning to build. So let's talk about the opportunity cost. So where could you spend 180 million? Well, my group suggestion is let's spend it to make our streets safer. We have a miserable rate of injuries to pedestrians in this county. We're number 11 in counties, 58 counties, we're number 11 in worst statistics to injuries to pedestrians and number three to injuries to bicyclists. Let's fix our streets, make it safer. Let's improve transit. Jared Walker, who's kind of a rock star transit planner, visited our community and he told the Regional Transportation Commission, "For a community of your size and your density, let alone degree of progressive values that operate in this community, you do not have very much transit." So why is this a misnomer to call it bus-on-shoulder? The plan is to run the buses in auxiliary lanes. Now, when you get to the, when the bus gets, you know, so imagine the bus in this lane is the auxiliary lane. When it gets to the interchange, it can continue in its own lane across the interchange. So it has a bus-only segment for a couple hundred yards. But let me show you what a real bus-on-shoulder looks like. This is in Minneapolis. The buses have their own lane. That's the simple definition. So what we're doing here is we're labeling a project something. It was labeled that way not just to get public support, but to get funding. And in fact, they did get funding for the first segments, the ones that are already funded, but they have not gotten funding for this one. If you notice, this is a photo taken of the auxiliary lane from Morrisita's Soquel. And it's congested, right? So you imagine a bus is in that traffic. Who's going to ride the bus anyway? Like if we had real bus-on-shoulders, such as I just showed you from Minneapolis. And we could do it with the auxiliary lanes they're already building. The Aptos segment is way too expensive and narrow to do a bus-on-shoulder, but we could do it on the ones that are already being built. What if we did that? Then it would make that prioritization of buses. A bus from Watsonville, from Green Valley Road to the county building takes about 35 minutes when there's middle of the day, when there's not much traffic. Imagine a bus-only lane in a good portion, you know, several miles of the highway. That would prioritize bus transit, make it more competitive with auto travel. And I just, I put up this slide, because, you know, we all, most of us got here by car today, right? So why would anybody take the bus? Well, in downtown Santa Cruz, 3% of the people who work there take the bus. In downtown Boulder, 23% of the people. And it's not like people in Colorado are built differently or think differently. It's that it's more convenient and it's cheaper because downtown Boulder people have a bus pass for free. This is a chart showing that transit in the previous Regional Transportation Commission plan, it had 44% in the 2035 plan. And this plan, the following plan, is 37%. And the highway got boosted. So we give more money to the highway and less money for our transit. And that may have something to do with why it's only 3% commuters ride the bus. So I want to take a little history of why we got here. So in 2000, there was a plan for a high occupancy vehicle lane. It's a carpool lane. And for a carpool lane, here's the two existing lanes and then an auxiliary lane, right? So this is the dream photo, like if we build this, you'll never have to be in congested traffic again. Problems with that. Financially infeasible. Imagine, you have to dump, demolish the overpasses, change the interchanges and the loops, and you have to rebuild all that stuff. The congestion relief would be short-lived, and we know that because there have been a lot of studies. So this is called the deuce demand. When you widen a road, more people show up for a lot of reasons. Oh, now the highway's clear. Oh, I'll move to Watsonville, it's cheaper the housing there, you know? And a lot of people would start doing that, and then the highway fills back up again. So we know that's true. There's never been anybody who'd be able to cite a case where 30 years after they widened the highway, you know, that you can still keep going. So the voters didn't buy it in 2004. They voted down the funding for this. The Federal Highway Administration told the RTC, "Give us back the money for the EIR because you guys don't have the money." The scaled-down version is the auxiliary lanes. We can't build a big project unless build auxiliary lanes. Why? Well, first of all, it's important to note that the EIR on the project, auxiliary lane Santa Cruz all the way to Freedom Boulevard, said, "Very slight improvement in traffic congestion." I have 30 seconds, something like that. Why would you invest hundreds of millions of dollars when you're going to get very slight improvement in traffic congestion? Anybody know the answer? Well, there was a deal in 2016. They were putting together a sales tax package, Measure D, and they wanted voters. They wanted voters to vote for it. So they told them, "You're going to have congestion relief." Here's the flyer that went to every voter in the county paid for by the RTC, promising congestion relief. And that was dishonest, but that's the trajectory that we're on. I just want to mention one thing. I put the photo of our attorney up here because you may see him around town. He lives in Aptos, he works in Aptos. He also happens to be one of the top attorneys fighting Caltrans. He's won two lawsuits against Caltrans. And we're on our third one here. And there's a political strategy, which is to invite Kristin Brown, our candidate for supervisor, for us to listen. And so that's why you're here today. Thank you very much.
So it's my pleasure to introduce Capitol's mayor and councilmember Kristin Brown. Kristin has a long list of common accomplishments in leadership and former activities in the area. And here are just a few. If I did everything, I'd take another 10 minutes, right here. She is vice chair of Santa Cruz Metro Transit. She's also the chair of Santa Cruz Regional Transportation Commission, member of League of California Transportation Communications and Public Work Policies Committee, and the last president of the Association of Monterey Bay Area Government, which we call M-BAY. Those four are leading to transportation, so that's why I mentioned those. If you want to get more information on Kristin, you can go to her website. It says Kristin Brown, her second district supervisor. So let's welcome Kristin.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here. I really appreciate it. I knew coming into this this morning that there's going to be some things we agree on and there's going to be some things we don't. But I'm here today because I want to listen and learn, and I believe that no one accomplishes anything alone. And so we need to collaborate to make sure that we're finding solutions for our community. So I'll start with the things that we agree on. The congestion hurts everybody. I have not seen anything, in anything that I've read and any of the work that I've done that will show how we just get rid of traffic congestion on Highway 1. There's no silver bullet for it. And so what I need to look at when I'm looking at different transportation projects is the pros and the cons, and where will it hurt and where will it help? And how do those outweigh each other in a way that maybe there's some kind of solutions somewhere? And so I agree that the auxiliary lanes are not going to be an end-all-be-all for traffic on Highway 1. What we are hoping is that it's going to be helpful in preventing cut-through traffic in our neighborhoods when people would otherwise be going on surface streets and through our communities, that they can just take an auxiliary lane from one exit to the other and that that's going to help with that issue in our neighborhoods. The HOV lanes, yeah, so there's not a lot of interest or money with the HOV lanes right now. It's not taking up a lot of our time or attention. And if it's, you know, the will to have it removed from our 2050 RTP, that's going to be voted on in June 2026. And I'm not opposed to the potential of removing that. But right now, it's not taking up any time, money, or energy because it's not moving forward. But come, when it comes time to vote on that, certainly something I'm willing to consider. Another thing I think we can agree on is one of the things we can do to address, maybe not address traffic congestion on Highway 1, but to avoid it, is to invest in our metro transit system, to continue planning for passenger rail, and give those alternatives so that people don't have to sit in the congestion on Highway 1. How much time do I have left? One minute, okay. I agree, our bike and pedestrian facilities are miserable. We got to invest in ensuring that we have more pedestrian safety projects, more bike infrastructure. These are really important things. We are working right now on transit priority signals on Soquel, which means that when the bus comes down Soquel, the green light would stay green a little longer or the red light would turn green a little faster so that the bus can keep going. And that's something that we're working on to keep kind of traffic moving along. So there's, you know, lots of things that we're working on, and 30 seconds left. I guess I'll just say that I'm open to conversation about any of these issues, and I hope that you will all reach out. The trees are a significant concern that I share with you all. Of the 1,100, 200 are considered significant. And there are mitigation issues in the EIR about what will need to be replaced at a 5:1 or 10:1 ratio. That's going to take a long time for those trees to mature. But it's an issue that I share your concern with and I'm happy to discuss further. Thank you.
Speaker will be Matt Farrell, and he's a member of Friends of Rail and Trail.
Good morning. I'm here today representing Friends of the Rail and Trail. Friends of the Rail and Trail was founded in 2002. So it's been active on the issue of the rail and the trail for over 20 years. And I'm also proud to say that we still have one of the original founders of the Rail and Trail effort, Buston Sawhill, is still on our board. So we have a great wealth of memory about all the work that has been done to get us to where we are today. And I think the other point I wanted to make is we feel the rail project is critical along with the trail project because over 50% of people, you know, the population of the county of Santa Cruz lives within a half mile of the trail. And the other thing is that there's a large number of people who are underserved in terms of they don't own a car. And many of those communities, large percentages of those communities in our county are also close to the rail line. And that's largely because the rail line was established in the early formation of our county. So most of the settlement developed along the rail line. So it's a critical resource to try and plan our future. We have been heartened by the response of the voters in the county, you know, their interest in protecting that resource and keeping it available for rail transit development. I think Measure D in 2022 clearly demonstrated that almost three-quarters of the voters in our county don't want to give up the opportunity to develop a rail line on the corridor. Ford as an organization is a broad coalition of various advocates in the community. And so as an organization, we have not taken a position on the highway widening because as a board and as a membership, we have wide-ranging opinions about that proposal. But we are very clear about the fact that we feel it's critical to develop and to preserve and develop the rail line to serve our region. So today, we have two questions we would like to add, ask the candidates or the candidate who is here today. We would ask Kristin, "Do you feel that the impacts of climate change are apparent and upon us now?" And then secondly, "Do you support pursuing the Rail and Trail project to address climate change? And do you oppose rail banking?" Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start by answering the questions first and foremost. Yes, the climate crisis has absolutely declared itself. I don't know how anyone could argue that it hasn't. I think the storms that we've been seeing in the last several years in our county, the fire that used to be, you know, fire season, and now it's just any time in the year, you can expect these kind of catastrophic environmental events. And it's a result of climate change. It's happening now, and we need to do what we can to both address the fact that it's already here and then mitigate the factors that would cause it to become worse as we move into the future. Yes, rail and trail. Yes, I do. And I'm sure that it's no secret in this room that this is something that I've evolved in over time. But I absolutely am a supporter of rail transit. I voted to approve the project concept report and the additional, I think it was 34 million that we needed to get it done. I'm looking forward to the results of it. I do not support rail banking. I believe this is critical valuable transportation infrastructure. And once it's gone, we're never going to get it back. We used to have it through the Santa Cruz Mountains. And once that was gone, it's never to be seen again. And so I think this is something that we need to invest in for our future. I hear a lot about how expensive it is and how long it's going to take. Well, big projects that are really important take a long time and cost a lot of money. And it doesn't mean that it's impossible to happen. In my day job as the vice president of government relations for the Silicon Valley Leadership Group, I just recently put together a coalition of business and community leaders to advocate for federal funding for the BART extension into Santa Clara and San Jose. And with that coalition, we successfully secured $5.1 billion for that BART extension. It is the largest federal funding commitment on this side of the country, the second largest in the entire country in our history. So these things happen, it's possible, but we need to work together. We've got a lot of things that we need to accomplish as a community with groups like this that work together to make these things happen. Because the other truth of this is that public transit rarely ever pays for itself. And so we're going to need to make sure that we're working together as a coalition, as a community, to ensure that we're bringing in the funding that we need to make this happen. And in the meantime, I would absolutely not support any kind of rail banking or removal of the tracks because we're going to need it in the future, whenever that future may be upon us, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Okay, up next, we have Lonnie Faulkner. She's going to be representing the Sierra Club. And Lonnie is, for those of you that don't know, she ran for district one supervisor against Amanda Konig and came very close to winning. So we were all pulling for her. So she will come up. She also has a website and also advocacy group called Equity Transit that she's head of.
Excellent. Welcome, everybody. Give me a moment while I get hooked in here. My name's Lonnie Faulkner. Today, I'm representing the voice of Sierra Club. I do have my own organization, and I do a lot of advocacy for different things. But today, I will be representing Sierra Club. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on overarching goals of the Sierra Club, but I think it's really important to keep in mind that the Sierra Club is really integrative in its approach with ambitious climate solutions. As Kristin mentioned, we are in the middle of climate change. And how, what we do in the next few years is going to determine our impact over the next 50 years. So it's really important that number one goal is we're transitioning to clean energy, protecting land, air, and water. One of the things that's really important is equity. Sierra Club has a huge equity component, and that actually plays a big role in transportation equity as well, which is kind of the concentration of this conversation today. And I just want to point out that the Sierra Club was a co-founder of National Transit Equity Day, which I partnered with to bring to this county for two years in a row. And we want a stronger, higher-performance organization. And the reason why is we're right in the midst of global warming and climate change. If you look at a lot of the data and you look at national organizations, the signals are clear. We've seen it here in terms of fires and weather patterns, but there's no denying it. And so we really need to have representatives in our community, in our government, that really understand the critical nature of climate change and how to address it. Transportation is the largest contributor to climate change. I also want to note that actually agriculture is another big one, and for example, cattle products. But transportation is one of the largest contributors. And the Sierra Club supports transportation policies and systems that minimize the impact of land, airspace, and waterways, consumptions that reduce fuel, pollutants, noise. Noise pollution is huge with traffic. If you ever go to communities that have things like good public transit and rail, it's very quiet. But here, you can hear the highways and the viways from pretty far away. So, and actually, it causes hearing loss and all sorts of other physical ailments. We want to provide safe passage for not just people in cars, but also pedestrians and bicyclists. So this is key to, again, Sierra Club transportation policy. Goods, movement of goods. How do we move freight around the country in a way that's environmentally wise? Encouraging good land years, minimizing travel requirements so that people don't have to travel as far to get what they need. Having a little grocery store in every community you can walk to or bike to. Strengthening local communities, town, and urban centers, promoting equal opportunity, and eliminating transportation subsidies. So we put billions and billions of dollars in highway widening. But actually, recent data shows that the payoff of highway widening, there isn't, there is no longer the kind of economic payoff. Whereas you put in for every dollar into robust public transit systems, you get a $5 payoff that goes back into your economy. So we're really under, we're not investing in proper structures anymore. We really have to change that, not only economically and equity, but also in terms of the environment. So it's a really multiple-pronged, important perspective that we need to take. So we need to prioritize as a community walking, active transportation, right? So that's the rail trail, for example, and other trails. But really important is safe streets. How do we get to and from places safely on our streets? Rail systems are considered the most effective in stimulating compact development patterns. Again, robust public transportation, coordinated electrified bus-only lanes, as Rick alluded to. Parking costs should be separated and unbundled. Amtrak and high-speed intercity rail. Our rail line will connect us to the state rail network, which means that from our rail line, not only can we get through all these wonderful villages and towns, we can actually connect to rail lines that are being built across the state of California and the United States. Employers should encourage work from home, sorry. We need to ensure low-income, disabled, and elderly people have equal access, that they're not put second tier. We all have equal access. GHGs, passenger vehicles, right here in this community. GHDs, passenger vehicles, right here in this community, sorry, it's 70%. That's induced demand. I'm being told that I need to stop. And I just wanna mention that the Sierra Club has a 50-page paper about the importance of rail. It is key, absolutely key, to changing the climate change in this country. It's a very good paper. I won't quote some of the things that I was gonna quote, 'cause my time is up, but I would encourage you to look at rail as it is the most energy-efficient, the safest, the least damaging to the environment form of transportation. As far as questions, Kristin, we'd like to know, "How would you get people to use public transportation, both now and as we begin to look at creating a more robust system?" And then the second question is, "How do you envision supporting an, this perspective, if you do, of prioritizing rail for our future?" Again, looking 50 to 100 years. And those are two questions. Thank you.
So, I agree. The, the climate crisis is incredibly serious, and we feel it here. I think I just talked about that previously. I'll just start by saying that I support nature-based solutions to addressing coastal erosion, fire-hardening grants, fire-wise communities, and I'm working right now to try to better understand the issues that our community is facing in regard to losing their insurance because of the risk of fire in our community. And again, these are all climate-related issues. I am supportive of transit-oriented development, rail, passenger rail, our metro transit district, and of course, using rail for freight rather than trucking. I'm also supportive of commute, excuse me, complete streets projects that ensure bicycle and pedestrian safety. And I am also supportive of the work-from-home telecommute and flexible workdays. I myself work from home most of the time. I think it's really important. Another thing that I have mentioned in the past and would love to work with UCSC and Cabrillo on is flexible classrooms, because a classroom is a classroom, and if we can prevent students from having to go all the way down to UCSC to take a UCSC class when we have a Cabrillo College campus right here, I think that kind of partnership would also be great in preventing students from having to commute to different campuses based on where they live. The questions, "How to get people to use public transportation?" At Metro, one of the things we've been focusing on is ensuring that we have 15-minute headways wherever possible. Some of our headways went from 60 minutes to 30 minutes, some of them went from 30 to 15, but 15 is the goal. And that means you can leave your house without ever looking at a bus schedule, and whatever you hit the bus stop, you will never wait longer than 15 minutes. And that is a huge factor in whether or not people will take public transit. So we're working on that at Metro. Some of the routes were there, some of it we're still working on. That's upside down. The other part of it is fees, ensuring that we have equity-based fees in our transit. And in some cases, we're trying to find a way to move towards zero fare altogether. We have our youth cruise-free program, and when we implemented that program, our youth ridership went up 400%. Prioritizing rail for our future, you know, again, I think it's a matter of ensuring that we're moving forward with the plans and have the plans in place, that we're seeking the funding, and that we're out in the community letting people know that the benefit that this can offer to Santa Cruz County. I think there's a lot of misinformation around passenger rail in Santa Cruz County right now, and it's up to all of us to counter that misinformation and ensure that we're all working with the best available data. Was that the second, was the second question? Okay, all right.
Okay, let's thank Kristin for those answers.